Good evening and welcome to the October 1st, 2013 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. There are no recognitions, proclamations, or presentations this evening. We'll skip straight to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered into one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion, or is there an item that a member of the city commission would like removed from the consent agenda? Is there an item that a member of the public would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would like to add a subtotal of claims not including Rock Chalk Park-related items to 185 vendors for $26,115,697.08. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, motion moved by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. I'd also like a motion for the $461,325.82 to two vendors associated with Rock Chalk Park.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 4-1 with Vice Mayor Amick dissenting. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. A few items in this week's report. As you can see, we have enhanced public accessibility to our database for licensed contractors. Scott's Department and Jim Wisdom's Department, Information Technology, have worked to create a database. We hope that's going to be useful to citizens. Our Metropolitan Planning Organization has been working on multimodal studies project. You see an update in regards to that work and a public meeting that they have scheduled for later this month. Utilities Department has provided an update on a couple of projects at our Kansas River Water Treatment Facility. One of them is the intakes in the Kansas River. We'll be bidding that project here probably later this month, and it's going to have a little bit of impact in Bercham Park. You see that in the map that is provided. We've been in contact with the neighborhood and KU Athletics and also Bowersock Mills where we're going to be cooperating with them and some of the river levels as we do the intake work that is a key part of our master plan. Also, a key part of the master plan is the redundant water supply to North Lawrence in the beginning of what we call our nor'easter water transmission project. Phillip's been working on that project for a long time along with the intake project. So, we're excited to get that first phase underway, and again, you'll be seeing that as a bid item in the coming weeks as we finalize the plans and some of the property acquisition for that project. CDPG has some information here in regards to their work. Commissioner Farmer inquired earlier today about the impact of the partial federal government shutdown and its impact on the CDPG and home programs, and Scott and Danny report that there's a pretty minimal impact at this point because of the appropriations that we're spending from a previous federal budget years, essentially the way I look at it. Obviously, if they don't re-up CDPG and home in the future fiscal year, that could be a concern. Probably the major impact, it's probably the major impact that we see throughout the city organization is that the federal government staff members that we contact, whether it's in HUD or any number of different programs, FEMA, EPA, whatever it would be, a number of those staff members are not working, and matter of fact, they're not allowed to work. So, we've got, there's impact a little bit to the city in that regard. Also, a report from Planning and Development Services regarding Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Flash.
Work going on at the Rotary Arboretum Garden. Eileen put together a paragraph that shows the savings that we have achieved through some improved lighting efficiencies at Lawrence Arts Center. Mayor and Commissioner Shum, along with some other Lawrence community leaders, attended the Food Systems Workshop, and they have good report from that information, and related really to that is the Common Ground Program and celebrating a couple of successful years. So, thanks for letting me go through that lengthy report. I'm happy to respond. Any questions or comments?
Any questions for Dave? Yes, please.
It's mainly a question for the body regarding the Food Systems Workshop. One of the things that I've spoken to Nancy Thelman about that I think would be a positive step and in a very good direction is to have city representatives on the Douglas County Food Policy Council so that we can start talking about how to improve our food system and, of course, the conversations surrounding the food hub. And so, I don't know what the process is for how we might go about doing that, but I would offer it up to this body to just consider and to have a representative so that we can understand what's going on, because that's, I think that's going to be important work as we kind of move forward, and I know you and Bob had a good time at the conference. And so, we're really on the brink of being a leader, cutting edge of this, and so I think it would be good for us to kind of jump on the bandwagon with the great work that the county's done to lead the way.
Do you recall how we finalized our desire to be more involved in that? Was it just send letter?
Yeah, we were wanting to have a representative from this body on it. What we had figured out is that we were pretty far behind on information only because we haven't been integrated into the overall program, and the program had been in place for over three years. So, I had no idea that they had gone that long, didn't know much about it. I don't know a year.
Yeah, same thing.
So, I don't know if we decided what the mechanism should be to ask for inclusion in that, but certainly to write a letter and saying we would suggest a member of the city commission to be on board and that group would be, I think it'd be as good as anything.
Okay, great. So, we'll go ahead and draft a letter, Dave, requesting?
On the, be a member of the Food Policy Council.
Right.
There's some pretty amazing things going on out there, though, that are, it's pretty interesting. It's kind of mind-boggling, some of the stuff that some of these cities are doing, so it's working.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Jeremy. All right, the next item is a regular agenda items, and I'd like to ask anyone who has a cellphone to please put it on silent so that it doesn't interrupt our meeting this evening. And also, there's a four-minute time limit per agenda item, and at 3 minutes and 30 seconds, you'll hear this chime, and that'll be your indication to please wrap up. First item on the agenda is to consider adopting a first reading ordinance number 8862, authorizing the issuance of $40 million in industrial revenue bonds with Kansas Athletics portion of the Rock Chalk Park project.
Commissioners, I'm going to turn this to Gary Anderson, partner with the law firm of Gilmore Bell, who is the city's council in regards to this issuance.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Gary Anderson here, your line counsel this evening. Just to recap sort of where we've been on the industrial revenue bonds for this project. The commission approved a resolution of intent back on January 22nd. Then, on March 5th, the commission approved a second resolution of intent that included the requested tax abatement, which was 100% abatement for 10 years. The ordinance before you tonight would approve up to $40 million in industrial revenue bonds. This is a transaction that we'd normally refer to as a buy-your-own-bonds deal where Bliss Sports is the tenant under the lease, and they will also be buying the bonds. Maybe the most important thing to understand is that the city has no liability on the bonds. The sole source of repayment of the bonds is the lease payments made by Bliss, which in effect, they make to themselves. And again, the sole purpose of industrial revenue bonds in this context is solely for the purpose of getting the property tax abatement and the sales tax exemption on construction materials at the site. So, the ordinance approves a number of the documents in connection with the financing, which we have drafted, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the transaction or the documents.
Yes.
The one point that I'd like to make sure that the public understands is that while this is tax abatement and relief of sales tax, for a private individual, it's no different than if KU is building it themselves, because by statute, they'd be exempt from these particular taxes. Is that correct, right?
That is correct. Because of the interjection of Bliss Sports between the Endowment Association and Kansas Athletics, that triggers the taxability of the property, and by the issuance of the industrial revenue bonds, Kansas Athletics is receiving the same benefit they would have if they had built the facility themselves.
Yeah, if the athletic department was building it, it'd be a moot point. They wouldn't even be here.
Exactly.
Very good.
Gary, anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand this well. There's, they're going to have $40 million worth of bonds, and they're going to buy that back and take care of that. Is there any need for the city to somehow certify that that money actually is being used on the Rock Chalk Park, or do we have any responsibilities for that? Should we be thinking about that? Not that they would use, that I'm suspicious they would use the money for anything else, but rather that as a governing body, do we have any responsibilities, and is there any risk at all, and it doesn't sound like it, that that money would be used for other purposes?
No, the city has no responsibility. What the tenant will do is in connection with the draw request to the bond trustee, which is BOKFNA, Bank of Oklahoma, is they will certify in connection with each draw that it's being used to pay for the projects, not previously been reimbursed, et cetera. The city has access to that information if they so desire, but typically, the city's not involved in that process.
But we don't have to certify in any way that the bond money that's being taken out isn't being used for other projects?
Correct. You don't have to do anything in connection with it.
It's their own money, too.
Yeah, it's their own money.
Right.
But...
For the taxation issue.
For the taxation issue. They're ours. I wonder if there's any, if somebody did that, would that be of any benefit to them, actually, if they used it a different project?
No, because the sole reason they're doing it, again, this is, the bonds are not really a financing vehicle.
Right.
They're a vehicle to obtain property tax abatement, sales tax exemption. So, there's, there would be no benefit to using it on another property, because they don't get any benefit on that property.
That's what my understanding was, but there are some people in the public that some of the papers I read were indicating that, gave an impression that that money was being used and they would have to come up with X amount on their own, and that would be, might be difficult. Where does that money come from? If they used less than that amount of money, I know it is not a big deal, that would be, you know, on how well they built it, but do they have to report back to us, or do we have some type of notification when that, when they're done, that they're through withdrawing upon that?
When they are complete with the project, they'll file a certificate of completion with the bond trustee. Again, the bonds are up to a maximum amount of $40 million. Because of the way tax abatement law works in Kansas, 100% of your project needs to be financed with industrial revenue bonds to get 100% abatement. So, what we always recommend is that you estimate high, so you've got some cushion in case you have cost overruns. You know, they may come in at 38.9 million, or 32 million, or whatever number they come in. That will be the amount that's actually funded through the bonds, which again, should equal the total amount of the project costs. And again, this is just on the KU side, not on the rec side.
Right. And that was my understanding of this, but I wanted to make sure the public, and we have it in the public record, that those are the understandings that we have as the city commission, and that's very important to the, whether this passes or not. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mayor, if I could. Gary, in section two of the ordinance, will the money for the payments pass through the hands of the city? And the reason that I ask that is I read through the 120-plus pages that I had asked Dave to have you send back out last night. Very good reading as you go to bed, but talks about the bonds shall be solely, shall be payable solely out of the rents, revenues, and receipts derived by the issuer from the project. Now, it would seem to me that that tells, or tells me that as, we are the issuer of those bonds, that the payments will come through us and to the, to the bank in the end. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. What happens is, under the terms of the trust indenture, which is the agreement between the city and BOKF, the bond trustee, the city assigns all of its rights under the lease, except for rights of indemnification and rights to be insured to the bond trustee. So, all the payments will be made directly by Bliss Sports as the tenant to the bond trustee. None of the money will flow through the city.
Okay, so when I stop and look at, you know, what we went through from the perk committee and the revenues that were to be derived from the rent of the project, the 1.3 million, I don't have to look at that as being the sole amount of money that's going to cover the debt of the issuance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But any, any other monies that need to be made on those payments are going to come from the tenant then, correct?
Right. Bliss Sports pays money as the tenant. That money is received by the trustee. The trustee then pays that money to Bliss Sports as the bondholder. So, in effect, they're paying money to themselves.
One last question. Based on my knowledge, then, there would be no effect upon our bond rating or anything like that as far as the city is concerned?
That is correct.
Okay, good.
So, this is a vehicle for allowing this property to be built with a tax-exempt status and for them to allow for exemption for sales tax. Would that right convey to a private entity in the event that KU Athletics decided to terminate the lease and the property was now available for a third party, whether it be a for-profit company or for Bliss Sports themselves? Would that tax-exempt status be maintained because of the existence of these bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
Kansas Athletics, I believe, has a 50-year lease on the project, so they would have to terminate that lease in order for there to be a, I guess, a non-exempt entity like Kansas Athletics.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Gary.
You're welcome.
Is there public comment on this item? Okay. Mike, you brought up the fact that a lot of these documents had only been added to the agenda as of today to the public, and we had requested these documents yesterday to take a look at. He would ask if there's maybe it'd be a good idea to postpone this action for a week so the public could digest this information. I don't know. I wanted the rest of the commission to be aware of that and see if we could talk about that.
Well, Mayor, I appreciate you bringing that up. Because of the fact that we, there is a lot of material here, we had a similar situation back in the wintertime under then-Mayor Shum's term, where we had, you know, a lot of documents that were received within a short period of time prior to the meeting. I think it's only fair that, that ask for a one-week deferral unless there is some kind of deadline on this thing that has to be taken care of right now, given the opportunity for the public to be able to read and digest, you know, the material that we just got in the last 24 hours also.
The, it is true, we did remove from consideration for one week the agreement, I believe, is what we were debating then, and that was the overarching framework of the whole program and had been updated and had been updated with very little time for the public to get their arms wrapped around. I've had no one call. I don't, since no one spoke here tonight, I don't think there's anyone here that's wondering about it. I don't know what the, what the other commissioners have received in terms of inquiries on this, and the fact is that we already did a preliminary approval a couple months ago, was it?
You all have adopted a resolution of intent on the industrial revenue bonds. So, I might ask, Gary, I'm not aware, is there any issue about the timing on this? The other thing is that there's, you're not adopting it on final reading. This is just the first reading.
I think if the will of the commission is to defer it a week, I don't think that will interrupt the flow of the timing of the transaction.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I think, I think it's very appropriate to give the public the opportunity to be able to see the same documents that we've had, you know, for the last 24 hours. They've only had access to them, I'm going to guess, the last six hours since noon, seven hours. I think it would be appropriate to defer for one week.
Any other feedback from the commissioners on that suggestion?
My own thought is that it's unnecessary, and it probably will not be productive. However, I think this is a very controversial issue, and one of the problems has been the concept of transparency and making sure people have it. So, for that reason, I think Mike is probably right to delay it a week to allow the people to have a chance to look at this. I don't think very many people will, and I haven't received a call and I haven't heard anything at this time in this controversy of it. But I think in the essence of trying to be as transparent and try to be as open as we can about this, I think it's a very reasonable request by Mike. I think it's a reasonable move.
Okay. I agree. All right. So, is there a motion to, or either discuss, or is there a motion to postpone the first reading of this ordinance, 8862, for one week?
Move to postpone one week. Ordinance number 8862.
Second.
And one question. This was, consider adopting on the first reading, though. Is that what we're saying again?
Right, we're going to, we're going to, once again, adopt a first reading a week from today.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted that.
Yes.
Understood.
All right, so is a motion by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting a first reading ordinance number 8915, amending the sign code in chapter five, article 18, section 1841.6.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Kurt Schroeder with the Planning and Development Services Department. Before you tonight for adoption on first reading is ordinance number 8915, which amends the sign code to allow changeable digital display of fuel product and our price information on monument-type signs located in commercial or industrial zoning districts. Although the sign code currently allows changeable price signs for gas and fuel product prices, price signs can only be changed manually, typically with plastic numbers inserted into plastic or metal channels. The proposed amendment would also restrict newly allowed digital price and product information to not more than 25% of the total sign area, and would not allow product and our price information to scroll, flash, or otherwise simulate movement. The proposed sign code changes were requested during your July 9th meeting by Nancy Holmes of Fulbright Sign and Lighting. At that meeting, you directed staff to review the ordinance and present proposed amendments to the Sign Code Board of Appeals for review and recommendations. The amended ordinance, as currently written, was presented to the Sign Code Board of Appeals at its September 5th meeting. After public comment and board discussion, the board voted 4 to 1 to recommend approval of the ordinance. Staff believes the ordinance amendments, along with the proposed digital display restrictions, are consistent with the stated purposes of the sign code. Staff and the Sign Code Board of Appeals therefore recommend that ordinance number 8915, amending the sign code in chapter five, article 18, section 1841.6, be adopted on first reading. Barry Walthall of Development Services Staff, and of course, Scott McCullough, are here to help me respond to any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor, if I could, you asked a question yesterday in our agenda meeting about if this was going to be allowed to advertise only one particular grade of gas or something like that?
Right, right. You couldn't, you couldn't, it couldn't change from unleaded to mid-grade to premium. It would have to be a separate display for each, and it would have to maintain that display without flashing.
Okay.
I think that's right. Scott says so, so, you know.
That's correct, although Nancy Holmes is here as well, but same company. But basically, she had indicated that that works. That's usually what happens, that they'll have a static board, non-digital, with maybe three or four different price products that are non-digital, and then just put in the windows those, those different prices. And from the signs we've seen, the size is allowed here, that 25% or more than me, cover that.
Great, thank you.
Is it just the prices that cha, or electronically lighted, or is it the type of gasoline to?
With this amendment, it could be both.
Okay.
But she's indicated typically it's just the price.
All right. Public comment? Not an exciting topic. It's illuminating, but it's not exciting. All right.
I was going to ask if it's within our power to limit the first digit to nothing greater than two.
That's even better, Bob.
Then they would do a lot of business.
Oh, boy. All right, there's no public comment. Any comments by the commissioner or input?
You know, in reading through the minutes, the only, the only piece of information that the dissenting Board of Appeals members said was, was that it would be distracting to drivers, and, you know, I feel for those folks that are getting out in the middle of winter and even in the middle of summer, and there, there's even been some, I don't know if it's ever happened in Lawrence, but it certainly happened when I was in Arkansas, that as people were out changing the sign, they would get stuff thrown at them as people were driving by, and so...
Especially when you're raising the price.
That's right, yeah, exactly. So, I mean, I think there's, there's an element of public safety, and Commissioner Reardon talks about that all the time and how important that is. And so, this to me is, is not going to be distracting, and I think it'll, it'll allow the folks that change those signs to be safer in the event that that ever would happen in our wonderful illuminating community.
Yes.
And I have a feeling that if one were to do a study, you'd find that people have a shorter period of time they look at the signs when they're electronically illuminated. So, you'd probably be safer.
Absolutely. Mayor, I'd make a motion to concur with the recommendation from the Sign Code, Sign Code Board of Appeals.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting a first reading ordinance number 8916, amending the permit fee schedule in chapter five, article one, section 176, by adding note F.
Good evening. Barry Walthall with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, we have ordinance 8916, which proposes to add node F to the building permit fee schedule. Node F would establish a uniform permit fee for solar panel systems of $65. The request by Aaron Cromwell of Cromwell Environmental and Solar to adjust the method of permit fee calculation is, has been vetted by staff and through the Building Code Board of Appeals. In evaluating the request, staff found that the normal practice of assessing fees based on value... on valuation of the project may not be reasonable in this case. The, the cost of the equipment can be somewhat significant and doesn't really add much to the processing or inspection work that's done associated with the permit. There is precedent for a standardized fee of $65 for some other fees that the department charges. Mechanical permit fees several years ago were set at $65 after a study with the Mechanical Code Board of Appeals. We found that that was a, a, a pretty standard cost for the department to, to evaluate those applications and perform those inspections. We also found, more recently, when we were updating contractor licensing, license fees and renewal fees, that that $65 rate also was a, a, a pretty appropriate fee for handling license applications and renewals. We have a pretty standard set of, of review guidelines, and it's not a complicated process. Our more recent experience with the solar panel projects is, is very similar. Those projects have become very standardized as far as the submittals that are received, the, the number of inspections that are performed are, are usually just one, and it's usually just an electrical inspection. So, with the concurrence of the Building Code Board, staff and the board recommend to the commission that the ordinance adopting the, the new fee schedule be approved.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I, I just can't resist. I've been accused of bringing this up for the sole purpose of, of once again standing in this room and, and, and talking on a microphone.
Sure, remind them, remind them of the four-minute rule.
Yeah.
Clock's starting, buddy.
I, yeah, I, I won't, I won't go on, and you've got the materials, and I, I just want to have a chance here to thank commissioners for their time in, in reviewing this, and city staff, very particular, the Board of Appeals, Building Code Board of Appeals, for their time in this, and just to point out, yeah, we've got an unprecedented amount of, of support. I appreciate a unanimous decision from the Board of Appeals. We've got letter support from Chamber of Commerce, from, we had support from the Home Builders Association, and Sustainability Advisory Board, city staff, obviously, has, has issued a favorable recommendation for this, so I really do appreciate all that. We really are on the cusp of, of developing a very vibrant solar market here in Lawrence. I've had to work almost exclusively in Missouri with my company up until now, and so with this opportunity, the solar leasing, now we can, we can do it here in Lawrence. And in fact, we're, our, our response, we're just, just having unveiled this not too long ago, has been even more than we thought. So my, my estimates on, I think in, in my letter to you, I, I estimated that we would probably see 10 new employees for this, and I need to hire more than that right now. So, we're, we're hiring, and I'm expecting probably 25 as quickly as I can get them. And, so it's a, it's a, it's exciting time, and with you, with your help on, on the fees here, that's gonna, it's gonna help make solar more affordable, and the numbers work out more for, for more folks across town, so I appreciate your consideration on this.
May I ask you a question? On your, say, a, a large home or something like that, where you would have significant number of panels, what would your building fee be at this time, without this change?
Currently, it could be around 500 and something dollars, something like that. So we're, we're essentially, maybe we're going from, from 500 and something to 65, so there are cases where, and this is on a residential and commercial, this could be, this could be even a higher amount, I'd, I'd have to, you know, looking back on some of the other projects to...
But from talking to you in the past, really what they're inspecting is just the electrical connection, just pretty much one element of the, of the job, if there's not a structural component involved in it, is that correct?
I don't believe that there's a structural inspection that's, that's completed. There are, we do submit plans to, to, you know, that indicate how the connections are made and that sort of thing on, on, but for, that's more for a commercial, I think we're probably gonna be looking at a, an engineered document, still, you know, stamped PE, saying that it's structurally fine on a residential, we just don't, we just don't see problems in the industry, so it's not really necessary. Really, what you're looking at is a connection between the inverter and the, and the, and the panel, almost like a hot tub. If you're, you're installing a hot tub, you maybe have a breaker, you know, a disconnect switch and a, you know, something going in, it's, it's a similar type of inspection, it's a little, it's a little bit more than that, but it's sort of analogous to that.
All right, any other questions for you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional public comment? Quiet group tonight. All right, is there any questions, or is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to concur with the Building Code Board of Appeals and the recommendation of this new blind F on the inspection fees for $65.
Second. You have a motion by Vice Mayor Amick, and it's seconded by Commissioner Shum, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, thanks for coming. Next item is to consider adopting a joint city resolution number 7045, and a county resolution to be named later, establishing a steering committee to oversee and guide the review and updating Horizon 2020, which is the comprehensive plan of the city of Lawrence and the unincorporated Douglas County area, and consider authorizing the mayor to appoint steering committee members as noted in the resolution.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Scott McCullough, again with the Planning and Development Services Department. This item is an update to Horizon 2020, which was adopted in the mid-'90s with tremendous community input, and has, in my opinion, opinion, served the city and county and the decision-makers very well since then in guiding land use decisions and some other high-level policy decisions. Again, it was adopted by the three commissions that need to adopt such documents, the Planning Commission, City Commission, and County Commission. We consider it very much a living document. This highlights just a very few of the items that have received some significant policy review over the years. In the mid-2000s, for example, we took a really hard look at the industrial and employment chapter and made some, made some big policy shifts there. We've gone through two transportation plans, we have a new environment chapter, we've got several policy changes in county land use in our document, and we've done several sector and neighborhood plans. The comprehensive plan basically covers all of our land use categories, as well as incorporates many other types of plans, like the transportation plan, like the parks plan and some, and some other things. Wanted to show you our sector plan efforts since about, well, the early 2000s, essentially, where we attempted, the city attempted to get out ahead of development and ring the city, if you will, with our sector plans, which lay out the land use and transportation planning documents that guide growth. You have seen several of these in different forms, and with, as amendments come up to them, as developments come up that may not meet the, the plan as adopted, we amend those plans and make sure that it, it's compatible in and of itself and with other plans in the area. So I think the city should be very proud of their efforts in, in getting out ahead of development. This generally accommodates decades' worth of growth, and we've got more work to do. We've got to get south of the Waukesha River with a future Waukesha Plan. We are still entertaining different neighborhood plans and still working on different neighborhood plans within the city. But essentially, Horizon 2020 sets forth all of the umbrella policies that we use as assumptions and you use as assumptions as we do these sector plans. Some of these sector plans have impacted the urban growth area, and it leads us into the discussion of why we need, if it's such a living document and so up to date, why is a public review necessary? Well, it's still warranted for several reasons. One is that we need to catch up with some of the work we've already done, we've had a couple of censuses under our belt now that we need to change our demographics with, we've, we're continuously doing and piggybacking on other master plans that have to do with development-related issues, and there are many new trends in planning that we're, we're becoming a, a part of, such as local foods and multi-generational living. And of course, we need a name change for our document because 2020's coming up, and we don't wanna be past that with our comprehensive plan update. So in terms of the process, we have proposed for your consumption and review, sort of a three-phase process to get this in front of the community and back in front of you ultimately. One would be just public education and issue identification. Let's go to the community, educate them on the plan as it stands, adopt it, and then ask from them the issues that we need to look at. And that's an important part, obviously, of what we need to do. We know about some of the issues, like the demographics, like the urban growth area, so on and so forth, but then we need to review other goals and strategies to learn from the community about what they think is important to, to look at in the comprehensive plan. We'll do that through any number of ways, web surveys and social media and pub, public comment cards at public meetings, so on and so forth. The second phase, and then after we have done our work with the public, is to use our steering committee to determine what issues in the public meetings need to be addressed in the plan. That will set forth our actual work plan to go forth and, and do the amendments in the plan. Then phase three would be to draft those amendments, send them through the statutorily required process to amend a comprehensive plan, which involves the Planning Commission, the City Commission, and the County Commission, since it is a joint effort. One of the key components of our proposal is a steering committee that would guide all of this process. So, so what we would hope to do is get a 10-member steering committee appointed pretty quickly, and then set forth the phasing plan to them, get guidance and direction from them, and then set forth on our mission to go out with our, with our public meetings. And so in your memo, in your ordinance, we've got our committee laid out for you. In the ordinance, we have proposed a deadline of April 1st, 2015. I know that probably the lion's share of this could be and should be done in 2014, but we wanted to give the committee some, a little bit of a framework, so we laid out the phasing plan in the ordinance, and a little bit of a deadline to reach for it, as a goal. And so with that, I'm happy to stand for questions.
Any questions for Scott? Yes.
Scott White, what's the thinking behind no KU representation with the work that they're doing on their master plan? Do you think that would be helpful to have a representative from the university on this steering committee structure?
Commissioner Farmer, it would, it'll, it will certainly be part of the program to reach out to the universities in the city. It may be helpful to have them on the steering committee itself, but it's going to be just as helpful, in my opinion, to, to be very coordinated with them, and, like they are with us right now on their master planning. I'm not sure if we sit on a steering committee for the KU, but we have, we have gone to several meetings, been invited, have, have had high coordination with their master planning efforts. We would expect the same on our efforts.
Okay. We could have ex officios show up and, you know, have them be a part of it, for sure.
Point of information, I, I sit on the, the committee, and we've had numerous staff representation on a number of their work groups, we're actually meeting tomorrow morning again, talking about roads and, and interface, but, I think it's a very good suggestion to certainly encourage their input, maybe a special presentation from them. I don't know that their greatest value would be so much being on the committee, we wanna keep the committee at a size that can, that can be a good size to work with, but presentations from them, I think, and primarily from some of their staff that's familiar with some of their processes would, would be very helpful.
Yeah, after seeing their plans about a month ago, it's clear that they're, we need to coordinate with them.
Right.
Any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to remind you, broken record again, that we have three universities in our county, and so if there's ex officio, or, you know, they all, three need to be brought into the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Well, I think I started this process a little bit while ago when we first started talking about goals, and I think this goal is an attainable one, and we've gotten some feedback from the county about adding another at-large representative at their request, at their appointment, so I think we've done that. We're at 10 now, is that right then? If you have any feedback on this, or any comments on the resolution, I'd take them now. I'd like also to hear about any suggestions on who to appoint from a county or city standpoint. I think we have three exclusive appointments, but we also will work with the county on at least one more. And of course, I was going to ask Mike to serve as the person in charge of this, mainly 'cause he'll be around still in case it doesn't get done, and, you know, the, the goal is to take these comments, the, the input, the information, and then move forward with the implementation of the plan, and I, since, I think he's gonna be the mayor at the time, I think that would be helpful to, to have him involved in this process.
Mayor, I'd look forward to the opportunity, you know, one of the, one of the exciting parts of Horizon 2020, and as Scott has said, being a living document and the amount of work that members of the public have already put into the framework of the document, we can only make it stronger for, you know, the community and the county as a whole. So I think, you know, we're very fortunate in having the work, a lot of the work that's already been done.
Exactly.
Looking at the sector plans and realize that, I think you and I have been in a voting position to approve any and all of the sector plans.
Which is one of the reasons why I thought it was important, we kinda merge all these things and, and, and learn from what we've had before, so over the last six or seven years, and hopefully have an opportunity to improve the document, but not change it dramatically, I don't think.
And, and to do as was suggested, formatting the document to be more consistent and more user-friendly, I think is, is something that ought to be the goal of everybody that serves, so I think that's where we're at.
Any feedback or input? You good?
I, I'm, I'm, I think this is excellent. You know, any living document is like a living person, it needs to check up periodically, it needs to be changed and reevaluated as we age. And I think this is just an example of that, 'cause Lawrence has changed what it had been in 1998 and the 90s, so I, I think this is a real opportunity to reevaluate and to create a document that's better than the one we have now, which I think is a pretty good document.
Good comments.
I'm gonna be the outlier here when I say this, but, but, you know, this, this was adopted, well, actually, the, the planning process was initiated when I was eight years old, and, and, you know, and now I'm not anymore, and so, so at some point, we're, we're, my concern is, is that this plan has got, gotten to be so cumbersome and bulky, and, and I understand the, the, you know, the reasons why a living document perhaps is preferable to going back to the drawing board and, and redoing it, but, but our community's grown significantly o, over the last 15 years. Our community has many different people than it had 15 years ago, with, with maybe the only consistency being the, the lifetime representatives here, Commissioner Shum and Amick, but, but, but I think at some point, the, the, you know, it, it would behoove us to have a conversation, at what point do, do we say, if, if we're gonna do Horizon 2040 in 2039 or 2035, do we still have this document that was, we received community input on in 1991? Or at some point, do we say, maybe we need to do that again? I mean, maybe we need to go back to the community and have a process that takes a few years. And, and I just think that's important and, and appropriate to, to, to interject into the conversation, because, you know, that was one of the big things that we heard about Rock Chalk Park, was, you know, the sales tax was back in 1994, and interestingly enough, the, the same folks that, that, that were trumpeting for a revote are the same folks that are trumpeting, trumpeting to keep Horizon 2020 the same. So, you know, there's a, there's a contradiction there of sorts, but, but, but to me, it's a huge document that I'm not sure that anybody understands its implications, other than maybe the planning staff and, and Dave and his staff, but I certainly don't, and it's just huge. And so, how can we, how can we get at what we're trying to get at, which is a good, solid plan, without having all this extraneous information that we're kinda trying to... wrangle and understand and get our, get our heads around? I just think it, it would be good for us to, to keep that in mind. I mean, at what point do we do that? Would, would be the first thing that I would say. The second thing would be, I had a great opportunity to visit with the Sustainability Advisory Board a few weeks ago and one of the things that I suggested to them was to put a sustainability plan, a chapter, sustainability chapter. We've got an environmental chapter and we've got a couple of other things that I didn't really understand, but I think that would be good to include in this process and we've got a great board that, that I think would be excited to do that. And certainly that's something that as a progressive community, I think would, would be a priority for us. So, so that would be my only suggestion is, is as we do that, maybe we could look at, at adding some sustainability-related things to, to this document if, if in fact we were going to keep it the same and add to or, or take away. My concern is, is that at what point does it get too big?
I think what was, my intention, Jeremy, was to have this committee examine just those things.
Sure.
And, and the concept of amending it seems like a good place to start.
Sure.
Maybe the committee reports back and says exactly what you said, that it's too big, we need to retool it, we need to take it back apart and put it back together so it's more, or easier to understand and more useful to the community based on where we're headed. As well as the addition of these kind of items like sustainability, I think that's where hopefully the feedback from the public, from commissioners, from, from, from our staff will make this better. And then, you know, when, when this is complete, then we'll know, I think, whether or not a complete rebuild is needed or, or a checkup. But I, I have a feeling, you know, the main reason I want to do this is because of some of the things you've said already.
Sure.
It's, it's clear that there's a lot there and it needs to be, it needs to be more useful to everyone. All right? So we'll start with a review and we'll see where it leads us, hopefully sooner than April 2015, right, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
About 31st of December 14.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So is there a motion to consider in adopting this resolution?
I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 7045, establishing a steering committee to oversee the Horizon 2020.
Great. Thank you. Motion to adopt Joint Resolution, Resolution 7045 by Commissioner Riordan, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Public comment of general nature? Future agenda items?
Commissioners, you see what we have scheduled for next week. In addition, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the changes and improvements out on the former farmland property next week and I think we're going to have a briefing on planned waterline improvements and then eventually intersection improvements that you all have previously authorized at 23rd and Iowa that will be starting here in the, the waterline improvements will be starting here later this year and then we'll be off to some of the road improvements next year.
And everybody turned in their comments on the rental registration ordinance? If not, please do so.
Comments, we'll work to post those and then we'll work to see what we can do to get that ready for your October 15th meeting.
Okay.
Do they go A to Z?
I think we have a number of items to work on between now, basically in a week from tomorrow.
I was all over where. Okay.
Imagine that.
Commission items? Nope. All right, is there a, unless there's a reason to discuss our calendar, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Good night, everybody.
Not bad.